Select Board Meeting, October 2nd, 2017. In attendance Chairman Moguln, Mr. Dini, Mr. Fox, Mr. Steinhardt, and Cindy Pendleton.
Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting for October 2nd. I'd like to start the meeting by having a moment of silence. We lost Ed Sebula, a former Southwick Police Officer, and Francis Lebranche, past LMC Rampant Tenant and Parking Rack Maintenance Person, and also for the people that were killed and injured in the tragedy in Las Vegas yesterday. Thank you. Seeing how it's 6:50, this is your opportunity to, if you have any public comments that you'd like to address to the Select Board, now's your opportunity. Is there anyone here that would like to make any public comments? Excellent. We've got a couple of minutes before the Finance Committee, so why don't we pay some bills? And we'll acknowledge payroll warrant number 1808 dated 9/18, the amount of $208,333.36. Payables warrant 1809 from October 2nd for $232,968.32. And payables warrant 1809B from 9/25 in the amount of $327,065.56. Okay. Minutes of 9/18. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Did we have any executive session?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One abstention. Pre-action item number one, reminder that the spaghetti and chicken supper fundraiser for the Southwick Canine is Saturday, October 14th, 4 to 7 at the VFW. Sending Jax off into retirement and meet our new Canine Officer, Mike Westcott, and his new partner, General?
General.
General. Okay, you want to do the chairmail action items first? Knock them out?
I don't think there's been any votes.
There's not. We don't need to vote on this city-town owner agreement?
Yeah, that is listed on the agenda, the modified red one here in the bottom.
Yep. Okay.
Do we want to do it now or just wait till you get to it?
No, why don't we, it's right in my hand, let's take care of it.
Sure, if that's the original, the original may already be in your folder.
Okay. Do everybody have a copy of that city-town owner agreement?
Yeah, I'm sure.
The original.
The original, right.
That's just for the other board members.
I didn't realize it was in my folder.
Make a motion and have the chairman sign it.
Second thought.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve agreement with Director of Assessment.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The snow and ice policy has been updated with all the changes that were made at our last meeting, so I believe that is ready for a vote.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's some of what we're going to be going over Doug with, some of the neighborhoods.
Yes, and we are also going to plow ahead with, no pun intended, the, sorry, I'll be here all week.
Yeah.
That bylaw that we need to adopt that town.
Yep, Town Council's supposed to be working on the draft of it with DPW. Beautiful.
Excellent. The next item is from Charles Dunlap, SEMA Director, to approval to accept a $100 donation from the Rotary Club of Southwick that was received by SEMA. There are several items we are considering this donation to be used for and are looking at the prioritization use at the present time.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item four is approved receipt of Mass DEP recycling grant for $5,400 through the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program, signed by Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Colito.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next is a letter from C. Brett Coulson to Police Chief David Parity. "I have very much enjoyed working as both Farm Inspector and Animal Control Officer for the past over years. At this time, family obligations and commitments do not allow me enough time to devote to the position. Sadly, I'm asking you to please accept this as a letter of resignation. I will very much misinteract with colleagues, Southwick's animal owners, and their pets. Thank you so much for the opportunity to make a difference in the lives of Southwick's animal population." And your motion to accept Mr. Coulson's resignation.
My motion to accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
Assuming we will have a requisite certificate for Mr. Coulson? And is there, do we have to do something to fill this vacancy at this time?
It is a nomination by the Board of Selectmen, the Secretary of Labor, the National Department's appointments, so the chief is going to be conferring with the Assistant Animal Inspector, who's also the Animal Control Officer, on identifying other suitable candidates.
Fantastic. So we have to authorize the Southwick Fire Department career captain posting.
Right, that was in your folder.
Yes, sir.
That was already in your folder.
Yep.
And the chief, Fire Chief is here for that and several others.
Okay, if you want to carry this a little bit until we get to other items, because we have an appointment at 7:00, I think this will probably take a little longer than that, right? I keep forgetting that's five minutes long. Okay. Good, we'll stop there. And we'll get to the Finance Committee right now. How'd I do?
Good.
All right. Come on up.
Good.
Who gets the lucky chair?
Oh, no, that chair is not in this room.
We should have given it to Bob, then get him to get the plate.
Bob is sitting in that chair, it's knocked down.
What's up, this? Okay, I'm good.
I think, Jim, and in the last couple of weeks, the Chief of Police had raised an issue with the board about taking advantage of our pool of reserve officer candidates to consider another individual to be brought on board during an academy that is upcoming. And tonight's meeting is to discuss what those prorated costs would be for the remainder of the year. He worked with myself and a town accountant to determine what the cost would be. I mean, we had a brand-new officer, was supposed to start in July, that did not happen, so the one that's gone into that slot went in three months late, so we have three months left of that line item. And then if we're bringing on another individual in November to also go to the academy with that person, we'd be able to use some of that same money to offset the cost, but there would also be funds that we would need to come up with for the remainder of the fiscal year if everyone in this room wanted to take advantage of having that second person come into the academy and prepare for the Chief of Police's departure and opening overall net slot in the department's staffing levels. So the chief is here, is there any questions about that? Or if you want, anybody has any questions on his wanting to get ahead of this process and planning for the need to replace the body in the department?
This is all caused by the academy schedules in themselves. We don't get a lot of academies locally here, so the next academy will start February 4th, all paperwork has to be in, to then improve by January 4th. And that sounds like it's a ways out there, but in reality, it's not. I'll give you an example, last week they already filled eight seats out of 48, so they're down to 40. And I expect every week they're going to start filling 10 at a time. So once they hit that 40, we're done, all right? So I've got one person already in the academy, I'm looking to have that other one, so when I leave in June, then you already have somebody in the academy showing their after-year out, and we won't have that shortage that we would normally have if we didn't do a plan like this.
I'm just not sure what I'm looking at here.
Well, the top part is the format, the Finance Committee generally likes to have whenever a brand-new, full-time officer or any position is contemplated, so that's the generic one for a full-time, annualized cost. And then the one below would be if this officer that we're talking about now for the chief's net replacement were to come on in November, that would be 35 weeks instead of 52, and it would be prorated. So then what we're trying to do is take that prorated cost and offset it by three months of funds that he has with the other person who just started, that was fully funded for the year, but was not actually in the position for three months. And that other person that he just referenced is already committed to go to the academy. So that's why you see two formulas. One is a full annualized cost, that the way the Finance Committee likes to have things like this presented to them so they can contemplate it, and then the one below it is the prorated cost with the offset of the funds that are already in the budget for a position that just recently got filled.
All right, so what's the bottom line, what you're actually looking for from the Finance Committee to come up with? Is that that 35?
Yeah, it's in the 35 and 40 range, so.
Assuming it flies, where do you contemplate it coming from?
Probably, well, I'm thinking we might be able to use some of the same line item, and we, the board, your board could make a commitment to say, listen, let's see what the free cash number comes in, or the reserve fund request and so forth. Because this is more than just a position here, it's also planning for the larger transition.
And you're set for your replacement, or is that your summer?
That's the next process.
When I look at the Medicare and the retirement, is that money that I put aside for future?
The Medicare. Just take out the paper.
Yeah.
From Hampden County.
Right, yeah, the retirement one, Bob, that's what gets paid into Hampden County retirement. The insurances depend upon what person, what plan a person might take. The uniforms, you know, they have to be outfitted.
Yeah, but I understand that, but I just want to stay on Medicare retirement for a second, Carl. You know, we've looked at, you know, situations where we're underfunded on retirement, is 9% enough to fund that retirement? Is that what we've done standard? Have we increased that at all?
This is not, this retirement doesn't go into that O-PED account. This retirement goes to Hampden, this is the share of the town paying into the county retirement, because the person becomes a member of the retirement.
Okay.
So what you're talking about, the O-PED number, that's a number that we annually revisit before we go into the special.
And we've made some special contributions to that.
Absolutely, the Finance Committee and the Selectmen have made appropriation every year to that account.
Right.
And we're fortunate, because you've probably made four or five years' worth of deposits to the account, and there hasn't been any monies taken out of it.
Carl, you said the 9% comes from the town? The employee doesn't pay their retirement?
No, we have to pay a share.
Right, you pay a share, but not the 9%.
Yeah, the employee's also making a share, but we also have an obligation, doesn't, whether, any public employer has to pay into it, because it's a defined benefit plan, the person becomes eligible after a certain period of time, they've got, you know.
They just wanted to make sure it wasn't part of the contract that, you know, that the employee's putting in their fair share.
Yes, they do that through their employer's orders.
Okay.
And again, this is all toward the fact that Massachusetts and all the county retirement systems are all going to be part of an effort to be fully funded by a certain number of years, unlike the performance of other retirement boards in other states. Massachusetts is well on its way, at least Hampden County is. I can't speak for every one of the 106 systems in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
So this proposal would be funded through free cash, is that what you just said?
Or.
Or reserve.
Or reserve, or maybe you just start out with reserve, then you, you know, you leverage your way, and you wait till you need to make a decision about the other part later on?
That's kind of what I was wondering, when does this become due and payable, you know?
When's it become real?
Yeah. Yeah, that's when the person's hired. So the chief's looking, the chief's looking in November.
That's why we wanted to meet with the Finance Committee.
Right.
Before we made a decision, to make sure that you were on board with this plan, because obviously if we don't go in this direction, we're going to have a overtime situation that's going to cost us double. Right, so, but we obviously didn't have the money to obligate it, you know, so we're looking to have some sort of mutual agreement between the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, and if we go to a town meeting and we can use some free cash, great, you know, but we might need a reserve transfer.
Also.
Are in the short.
An accommodation.
Right, an accommodation there.
Right.
You know, because we figured we were going to broach this issue, and then Doug's got a few more issues to just mention. Are there any questions about, for the Police Chief, or the Board, or myself regarding, this is normally the process you look at when you do, you know, the review of a position at a, you know, a budget process?
So this individual's already in the academy?
No. We have two reserves right now.
And what are the requirements? What do they, they can't go through the academy and then change their mind, right? Can they get the education that we're paying and then take it elsewhere?
No, because we would hire them and then send them to the academy as our employees, so they would come out of, it's an offer of employment from us.
And that's where our problem is, because I thought maybe you could just, talking to David, we'll put him through the academy, so we wouldn't even need to do anything till February 1st, right, that's where the academy is, but they don't want to hear that, they don't want to hear that he's hired, in the system, ready to go. So that's why we're really here now.
Well, because you're asking a person to leave their other job, make a life major change, so you've got to do this process to.
Right, but they are also receiving additional education, which could be taken elsewhere outside of the community.
Yeah, I don't know, do we have a thing in place where if they go through the academy?
We don't have one in place.
That they have to work so many years?
But generally, if they're a reserve in-house, it's because they want to have a position here long-term.
I know what you're saying, though. We're actually going through that now.
On the fire side, right.
On the fire side, we're looking at.
Exactly, to my point.
Yeah.
We spend a lot of money educating and then for other communities.
Well, we've been pretty fortunate, haven't we, Chief? Kind of evened out, we've gotten from other departments. We've had some people pay their own way. Have we lost some people? Probably, you know, one or two.
The other one, Linda, we're also not, we're.
But other people want to come to Southwick, so it evens out.
So what do you guys look for, 20-year commitment?
30.
Oh, at least. Yeah, right to the end.
Till we carry them out.
Yeah.
Are you looking for a vote from us?
In the near future, I think you have to have a meeting.
Okay.
We can't make a decision until you guys are on board, you know, because we can't expend money we don't have.
We don't have a meeting, we're not scheduled for a meeting.
Right.
So it's not a thought decision. When is your next meeting?
October. 23rd.
Is that going to be quick enough for you, Chief, or can we ask the Finance Committee to have an emergency meeting?
Well, or, the Finance Committee, the Selectmen, and the Capcom are going to be sitting.
Sorry about that.
Are going to be sitting at the fire station next Tuesday evening for an apparatus study presentation already, so I'm sure you've all had that intervention from Robin. So you might be able to deal with that as a consent agenda or an issue somewhere along the same time?
We're going to be back here on Tuesday, 6:30.
Well, that's, it's going to be at the fire station.
No, 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 the one before that.
Right.
Well, could we, could we take an impromptu vote? Could we take an impromptu vote tonight and then reaffirm it at our meeting on the 23rd? Is that legal, Carl?
No, I think you'd be better off just to gauge your consensus about what your vote would be, but I would not.
We can't take an official vote.
Right, right, I wouldn't do an actual vote, a wording and all that, just say if there's some sort of, if the consensus is that to go forward.
Well, I think it makes sense.
That would give them the comfort level to then go to their next step.
Well, I think it makes sense to do this so that we're not quite short-handed or incur a lot more expense to send somebody to an away academy, you know, and so we're really doing this because of the academy schedule, as the chief said.
Right, but his larger purpose is the transition.
Right. I would support it.
I'd support it.
Support it.
But I won't be there for that meeting, so.
Okay, well, it looks like you have a favorable.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
So are they still proposing going Tuesday to vote?
They can, yeah, or they can wait till the 23rd, whichever way they want to do it. We may be hosting a meeting for you for consent.
Right.
And Cindy will come over far and just take the votes.
Yeah, we can cover it, we're in a meeting.
Second order of information is, we are in the middle of getting ready to remove the old fuel tanks behind the fire station. And the new tanks are up and running now.
They are, but there's still, the Police and Fire have gone through their training sessions with them. But they're still being used, so what now needs to happen with the old tanks is, especially for those of us that have been on the capital planning committee for a number of years, where the, this original appropriation for the tank removal was done around the same time as the original appropriation for the new above-ground tanks at the DPW facility. So we've had several years pass, and now it's time to get ready to take them out. And from looking at the numbers of what we've had to deal with after tearing down the salt shed, the DPW building, the outbuilding, and some of the other stuff, we now have an issue where we could probably do almost everything in terms of the electrical disconnect, any contaminated fuel removal, licensed site professional to make sure that we oversee the project appropriately under the state environmental laws. The unit price bid we have with Crestview under our annual unit price contract is about 1,500 to 2,000 less than any other estimates, and we're meeting the threshold. Then that leaves us with some issues with restoring the paving, compaction, and making the surface plowable. And we do have, I need this picture if anybody just wants to see, there's this, there's your stuff that all has to be removed and made holes, because we have an issue where you have a plateau, and both chiefs pointed this out, but the pavement slopes down, plateaus for the concrete pad and the filling, and then there's still some sloping, we have to do some grading after the removal of the tanks. So the paving costs look like they're going to be anywhere in the $10,000 or $12,000 range to put everything back in place, so we can do one of two things there. We can either use funds from the existing public safety building repair and maintenance account, in front the money out of this, and then wait till we get into the later part of the fall, early winter, when we have a town meeting, the Finance Committee and the Selectmen could then do a supplemental transfer and replenish those lines. But the thing is, once we start getting into this project, you know, once you've removed tanks, and we don't believe there's any contamination, the testing has been done every year, but it's one of those things, you won't know till you get into it, but it has to be done, and we have most of the money to do it, but both chiefs would prefer to have the site finished, compacted, and with some level of pavement put over it, so that it'll be plowable for the winter.
Is there a DEP timeline or anything, if you have this done?
No. Well, we could put the whole thing off till next spring if you want, it's just one of those things where we're, you know, we're ready to go, and we have everything else pretty well lined up, but, you know, it's a matter of timing, it's either now, as soon as we can do it, you know, or next spring, and then, you know, we can see whatever else we need to do. But again, that's why I was mentioning, we have line items we could identify use, but we would be certainly drawing them down well ahead of their usual rate of usage, and they're not usually used for those types of things, because the money, when John Westcott had bladed into the budget and it was carried over for a number of years, was still sitting there while these other committees were dealing with having to go back and get supplemental appropriations for the increases for the above-ground tank.
So what's the thumbnail dollar mark?
So the estimate is probably about $12,000, coming fronting out of that other account.
For removal and restoration?
For the paving part, the removal part.
What's the removal?
It's $20,500 by Crestview for the removal. And then the licensed site professionals' cost would be anywhere from $3,800, depending upon what he has to do there, and like I said, some money for electrical disconnections and fuel relocation, because you have to take everything out of the tank, you know, we'll draw it out as much as we can use for fleet purposes, but once you get past a certain point, you want to be careful about putting what's in the absolute bottom of the tank into any vehicle.
Yeah, just probably debris in there.
Right, so there's that, and then that leaves us with the paving issue. Right, so there's that, and then that leaves us with the, um, the paving issue.
So you have the money for the rest of it, just not the paving?
Right, yeah, yeah, we've been carrying money for other money.
We're only looking for about twelve, twelve grand.
Exactly, you got about twenty thousand in the line item right now.
Let's do it, we'll get it over with.
So, we figured, uh, you know, Doug was talking to the, the chiefs and getting input from people. We just figured that since you were coming in, let's put this on the table and have a frank discussion and see if how we wanted to do this timing.
Yeah. Is there enough time to get it out and get the pavement restored?
That's, that's our intent, is to try to do that, and if you give us this okay, that's what we're gonna try to do.
But if you get going and Mother Nature Chain has a different opinion, and then you guys can't resurface.
We'll be fine.
You're good.
It comes out very quickly.
October.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, even if you get, I think from their point of view, even if we put binder in there, we'll have something in that ground.
Okay.
And they, um, you know, this tank's been monitored over, it's not like a, you know, some unmonitored oil tank or something that we don't know what we're gonna find when they hit it.
It was put in.
Pretty confident that.
This was a tank that was put in in the.
Yeah, so we're pretty confident that it's gonna be a very straightforward.
But it, it does represent.
Doug has experience with removing tanks.
I have with the.
Yeah, Jersey stuff.
Non-straightforward.
It does represent our, the, the last underground storage tanks, that the town is responsible, that it has. There is an old tank that's an above, you know, that's, you know, over in the library, but that's gonna be part of the resolution of that, but that's not underground. But this really represents the last underground storage tank that we have on the ministry facilities.
Any kind of memorial plaque contemplated for all those that have crashed into those tanks?
Yeah, well, the post, we're gonna keep that one post while the color's on it, yeah.
Because it's worked so well so far.
Put it in front of the DPW as another monument.
But, but it is something that I, I'm sure both chiefs could, could reinforce the issue from a traffic, uh, parking and circulation issue, that they would prefer everything to be done as soon as possible and to close the site up. And, and again, since you're going to be at the facility next week for the, um, presentation on the apparatus report, then you should all make yourself available to go out there and look at it.
Seven o'clock. Six thirty or seven? Seven, because we have a six thirty.
Could we have a Sharpie there so people could sign the tank, you know?
You don't want your name on the tank when they take it out, because that's bad. If they put, if they paint your name on the tank, it's bad, let me tell you.
Consensus to go ahead and do that.
I can't be there. I have a meeting already. There's a lot of us who already have commitments next Tuesday.
Now, you did get your care package with a copy of the report, right?
I was out of town for a week. I haven't gone through the mail. It's probably in that pile right now.
A famous pile.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I already have a meeting.
Yeah? Any questions?
Questions or concerns on that issue? Okay.
You've got.
Sheila's.
Yeah, you guys aren't gonna have a quorum.
Yeah, we're not gonna vote on anything though. Take out a indication for, for the, uh, police.
Right.
Police.
Right.
The additional policemen, so we can vote on the twenty-third.
Okay.
Do we have a consensus on this issue or?
I'd say yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
General nodding of heads, it looks, looks good to me.
Let the record reflect.
Let the record reflect that there was a lot of nodding of heads. Fire chief, police chief, everybody's nodding.
The gentleman in the back tonight has said, because he's been one of our biggest supporters of tanks in the ground that I can remember in my lifetime.
What's your nodding?
Or maybe he fell asleep.
I'd ask the vice chairman not to poke the bear.
Thank you.
I'm sure he's gonna be over there overseeing it.
Hey Joe, tanks for the memories.
Oh. We should have been here earlier.
I think this is broken now. Okay, and the last issue before anyone tells anyone the joke. Um, we are looking at, uh, we've had some preliminary discussions and meetings with Michelle Hill, um, about potentially looking at that organization. This was something that they, she had brought forth very late in the budget cycle last year. Um, and to look at, look at reorganizing that office again. Um, this is still very preliminary, but one of the advantages that will come out of that is to take advantage of quarterly billing. Um, so instead of semi-annual billing for, uh, taxes, and also, um, it will provide an opportunity to offer additional hours in the evening to the public. Right now, the, the town halls all close at four thirty. So, uh, it poses a problem for people who work and aren't home by four thirty. So one of the things that, uh, we've talked about is how to organize that, so that we can provide that service at least one day a week, uh, without giving up necessarily hours elsewhere. So, Carl, you have anything to add to that or?
Uh, well, it was something that she has raised before at budget meetings and it never got acted on, so it's, uh, because of the, uh, turnover and some staff now, we have a situation where it lends itself to an opportunity to go back and revisit it. So certainly if a member of the finance committee who is a liaison for that office wants to go and meet with her and go over that issue, that would be a good thing to do too. And, uh, because it's, it's gonna relate to, um, you know, the cost benefit of probably some additional dollars for some staffing.
So it's additional payroll?
Yeah.
For this scenario?
Yeah. And the other thing, the office also addresses a lot of the employee benefits, and that issue is becoming more, um, more hours and more responsibility dealing with employee benefits.
So, and this is kind of just a heads up, we've only had a, a meeting or so about it, but it's something that I think she's gonna be working towards for heading into budget season. So we wanted to give you guys a, a heads up.
Again, was it reasoning for quarterly billing?
Stabilize cash flow too, eliminate some short-term borrowing.
Things are really tight right now, being able to pay warrants.
So, and, and I'm not gonna tell you that this, this organization that will totally offset the, uh, short-term borrowing and interest therein, but, um, it certainly would help and, um, there's some other.
Do we have any kind of idea as to what the amount is as far as what the church or borrowing interest entails dollar-wise?
No, she can, she can put that together.
I think, and one of the reasons I want to have this kind of discussion is, is to, A, I don't remember who was the finance committee liaison to town clerk, and then get these questions so we can get that data back to you.
Sure.
Like what is total interest expense, what is, what is the upside of number of this, right, right, exactly, exactly.
I can't tell you who this is off topic.
Who's not here, because that's who it is, right?
No.
I think it is.
Okay. That's all we had.
Yeah.
Do you guys have anything for us that you want to go over and discuss? We'll see you next Tuesday at the fire department.
No, here.
Here first.
Here first.
Yes, and then.
Here first?
Six, uh, was it six thirty?
We're not gonna have a quorum.
No, it's all right.
So.
I don't think we'll need one.
For Tuesday?
For Tuesday.
Oh, is that next Tuesday?
Yes, sir.
Was it nineteen?
The twelfth.
Tenth.
Or the tenth, excuse me. Yes.
Yes, sir.
One follows the other.
And then we, then we race over to the fire department.
Six thirty and then seven o'clock over the fire hall.
That's the tenth?
You won't need it for that, for the fire thing. It's just apparatus review and.
We'll need a quorum for you.
What? Apparatus?
No, no, that's the tenth.
The other thing, sir, uh, Mr. Bealy, we might, we, you and I are both wrong. I believe the six thirty appointment is on Thursday at twelve.
Right, since you said that.
Thank you, I was losing my mind.
Well, that may be true too.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, I had that for Thursday at six thirty.
Okay, well, then, uh, ever yet.
And what is it?
The twelfth.
No, we're discussing.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's a Mr. Mobile.
All good, Bealy.
And I wasn't invited.
Okay, well, that's it then.
Don't feel slighted.
I am not at all.
I would be glad you're not invited to that one. Uh, that's it. Thank you very, very much. Keep up the excellent work. Thank you for coming down.
Good night. Good night, Tom.
Okay, fellers.
Good night, McNutt.
Thanks, Terry, good to see you.
Good to see you guys.
Now we take the library?
Library.
Library.
They've been waiting patiently.
Oh, they have, since seven fifteen, and that clock's like ten minutes fast, so it's exactly seven fifteen. It works, that clock is miraculous, sometimes it's fast, sometimes it's slow.
It changes times all of the time.
Now, wait a minute, it's not that kind of meeting.
Bring a stick.
The hell. Not that kind of meeting. Okay, now we're on to the library. Carl, you had another open house at the library?
Yeah, we did, myself.
Did you have any traffic issues?
No, there was, there was not too much traffic at all. Uh, myself, Bob Johnson, um, the library trustee, Mr. McMahon showed up. And, uh, you know, we, we did get a lot more inquiries, we did get people that took out some packages. We also had some people that were interested in having a house there, but, uh, we did not get what we thought we were going to get as a result of that secondary.
So, we have.
And I do have a, you know, there is a, a, the problem with it is there is a bid opening that's gonna be coming up that is posted for the seventeenth, but no one came to the mandatory opening, so.
And you haven't received any?
Oh, no, 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 we wouldn't get anything. Usually if you're gonna get something, you don't get it till right then. Some people walk them in and so forth, but I think you just need to be, um, you know, prepared for the event that, when the seventeenth rolls around, that nothing may be coming through the door.
Right.
And how will you want to handle that going forward?
Hmm. So how can we handle that going forward, or what should we be thinking about?
Well, you've had, you've had people who are interested in, you know, owning it with a conservation restriction, but not actually leasing it from the town and doing the work. So you do have that as a, as an issue, and then you have all sorts of things, but no matter what else you'll do, you'll have to go back to town meeting.
Right, do you think that if we were to sweeten the pot with some CPC funds to maybe say we'd take care of the exterior architectural or preservation, take that off the table for the, whoever's looking at leasing it, so the cost of redoing the interior could be reduced?
I'm not sure if that would, I'm not sure if that's gonna make enough of a difference.
Because I think that that was always on the, kind of on the table anyway. We kind of were gonna think that anybody would know that they had that avenue of going to the CPC under the historical piece.
I thought we were, we were sort of keeping quiet about it, but if we had some people that were talking seriously about doing it, that we then, you know, could possibly bring it forward to, but I think we, we didn't build it into the proposal at all.
When you have people that, even if someone was interested in some sort of share of that, they'd still be coming and looking at the property.
Yeah.
They're not even doing that.
Yeah, that's kind of my feeling too.
Yeah, so that's why I don't even want to think that that's, don't think for a minute that that made the just noticeable difference of why something may not be happening. Because otherwise you'd be kicking yourself a lot.
So if, if we were to entertain with the, with the historical commission's blessing, the notion of selling the property with a.
Preservation.
Preservation restriction, that's the right word. I think he said conservation, that's what has me stuck in my head. Preservation restriction, right.
We knew what you meant.
Is that something that you guys should go back and think about and come back with a, a consensus on? If we should look at that?
Yeah, we're having a board meeting tonight.
Wow.
Fast action.
Well, and then could you let us know by seven forty-five?
Probably could.
Well, I mean, nothing's gonna happen till the seventeenth, obviously, because you've got the bid opening, but, you know, if, if there was an interested party that would, and this would still have to go to town meeting again, obviously, for us to.
Right, it would be a.
It's off the table for now.
It would be a different word and article that really speaks to the historical thing that Lee's talking about. So it, it certainly would have to be.
But I think we should find out if they're amenable.
And even then, after it goes to town meeting, then it still has to go through another public bid process with the central register and so forth. And, and obviously, you know, we already know there's one party that already said, listen, I'm, I'm not gonna be putting in a submission bid, but I'm interested in actually buying it with, you know, the restriction later. So we, we've had at least one person say that to us, and maybe there may be others, and, you know, you have to think about how creative you're gonna have to get to, to make a compromise so that you can retain, you know, a building that has that historic element and charm.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't have any problem. I, I made that recommendation twenty years ago.
Yeah, I think, well, just to, you know, like we did with the finance committee, I think we've got a pretty much a consensus.
Pretty much.
Yeah, you know, to, to proceed with that, but we'll formalize it in our meeting.
Yeah, I mean, we've got, in this one, in this one, we've got some time on, right?
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is gonna happen till next year. Now you got a budget for maintaining it over the winter again.
We do that. I mean, Bob, Bob does have to make sure it's heated. We are paying a special rider through Lloyds of London Insurance, uh, you know, for unoccupied buildings. I, they came and did a tour of it the other day, so, you know, these companies do come out and look at the properties that they are insuring.
Yes, they do.
So, and, and the thing is, it's not an inexpensive policy, so I'd like to be able to do something by the spring when it's up for renewal again.
How much is it insured for?
Probably, you mean the cost of the premium or the?
No, the value of the building.
They, they didn't tell me that. I didn't get that report back, but.
Disgrace.
I mean, it, it's under Maya's regs, because don't forget, there's a value to a, a building, but then there's a whole other sentiment value of what you, we think it's worth.
Okay.
But that's where we stand, and of course, you know, uh, some of you people were at the last walkthrough. You were there when other people were walking around.
Yeah, it's interesting.
Yeah, so you know exactly how the process works.
Yep. All right.
Cool, so if you can come back to us with your thoughts on that, and then.
We will.
You know, and any guidance on, you know, what that, you know, the attorneys will end up working on the preservation restriction, because you have already identified what those areas are that need to be preserved, correct? So that, that's all done.
Oh, yeah.
Right, so that's not, you know, it's just the moment of how the building would be.
One of the things we need to look at too is if the building is gonna be sold, you know, how much of the interior do we continue to insist upon staying preserved versus just looking at, just keeping the shell, you know, that's another thing too.
Yeah.
Well, that's where we rely a little bit on your expertise too, on what's.
What is the expectation?
We've gotta handle that out.
And, 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 you know, realistic expectation too, right? If, you know, if it, it becomes burdensome even for someone for almost no money to buy the building, but still, we're, we're gonna be right where we are a year from now, and I know the expression you used was kicking the can, right? We're done kicking the can. We want to follow this through to the end and see it done, so.
And see it restored, so when people drive by, if they say, wow, that's a nice looking building, and that, that may be where they're putting the money. It's not so much gonna be whatever, we're not gonna make anything off of it.
Right.
You know, no one's contemplating, no one's contemplating big dollars coming into the town to buy it.
Right.
They're gonna be still spending the money that they need to do to invest their.
If they keep it on the tax rolls, there's the benefit.
Put it on a tax roll or anything, right.
Would, would it be, what is the zoning there, and if it were put on the open market with a preservation restriction? Is it BR or?
It's B or VR right there, it has to be.
Yeah, that's why it's not suitable for a home.
It's BBR and it's got, you know, it's pretty non-conforming on a small lot, so the parking's a problem, you know, but.
So if someone wanted to convert it into a house?
I don't think it's possible. I, I'd have to double check the zoning to be sure, but I don't think it's possible. Now, just throwing this out there. Now, just throwing this out there, if somebody wanted to move that building down the road and make it into a house in a residential zone, we'd be... I certainly would love to listen to that proposal.
With a restriction.
With a restriction, right? But a private entity.
Well, no, but you see, that might speak to the issue of what you're gonna go back and talk about. Like, here's a couple of different options we've talked about, and we would like to make sure that, you know, depending on whether you want to just pursue one as a recommendation or whether or not you wanna be a little bit more amenable to things that could still protect it, including a sale and a relocation or including a renovation on site, you know?
Most favorable to lease, right, right.
Yeah, because then that might, that might have to be written in that way in terms of how the vote is reflected and then worded at town meeting, and then how the instrument is that transfers and can... Because whatever it is in the end, it's gonna have to be recorded in the register.
A preservation restriction is usually put on a property that is eligible for national register. If you move a building, it is typically not eligible for national register.
This is why we rely on you guys, I don't know.
I've only seen one relocated building in the region that may be on the national register, and that was in Westfield with the Dewey House. And I mean, the house is, you know, mint inside now, pretty much, so...
So nothing at Starro Time? Is Starro Time kept as?
Nothing's on national register there.
But I mean, even if you, if that, if the, you know, and I'm just putting this out there, right? If the facility, the building moved, you know, you'd still... Wherever it landed, you know, it would still, you know, have the character you could... And it might be part of the conditions of sale or some other thing, rather than, you know, some other way of doing what you wanna do. And it would free up the real estate, potentially to unlock some of the value in that real estate, whether it's to the neighbor, to the south, or what have you.
We need to do our due diligence.
But just, I mean, this way you guys can have your meeting and, you know, throw these things out and think them through and come back to us with a list. But we do wanna follow this through and take it to the end and get it done, rather than just continue.
Okay.
Excellent.
Sounds good.
Thank you for all your efforts on this. Right. It's not money well spent, you know, and we, I've done it. It's a tough check to write.
But you are right, putting it back on the tax rule.
Right, in some ways, shape or form, right?
Yeah.
Good night.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now we're up to the fire chief.
We're back to the fire chief.
Back to the fire chief. I think all the chairs are safe tonight, from the looks of it.
Unless we push this button.
Door is turned.
I'm checking to see if I missed anything. You gotta sign this one to catch up. I forgot to send it out. Snow and ice? Never mind, you don't need to. Okay. Killing me, Smalls. All right. So first is job posting for captain.
Correct.
Floor is yours.
So I submitted to you, I believe, the captain's description that Carl and I worked on and got Fred to review and approve, but the one last item was the salary range for the captain's position.
Yes.
So in that package I sent you was my suggestions and the supporting material for area towns of similar size.
Yes.
For the range. And that's the last step, is determining that range to be able to post.
Because this is essentially his second command, like the lieutenant is in the least.
Understood. And what is the budgeted line item for that position?
So, it's in the paramedic line item. I don't know if I...
We could carry the numbers within the gross number. And the other thing to think about is... You're talking about... You're talking about the full-time firefighter EMT. That was just advertised?
Yes.
So you're three months into the new year. By the time you get somebody on, you're four or five months into the new year. By the time you get this up... So the funds are in line items now. They'll just have to be adjusted.
For this year.
Right, more than this year. It's just a matter of, you know, doing any prorated adjustment that the chief will need to do to annualize them when he does his budget exercise in February.
Understood.
But this was the ballpark of where we were looking at.
That was his range, anyway. So we need to finalize this as part of the posting so that we can advertise the position he has to job serve. So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's get it going. Another thing where we're gonna stop kicking the can down the road.
Yeah, exactly. Can't get old.
And then the next item, chief, was the, approve the amended call force pay structure?
Correct. The, if you remember, not too long ago, you approved the EMS call force. Mike did a great job at trying to utilize our existing budget, breaking it apart versus some stipends and so much for a call. It ended up being a very difficult process, and we're finding that both the EMTs, my admin, and the town accounting is spending numerous hours just making sure formulas are right. And while it was well-intended, I think we need to reboot and just go to a plain, flat-rate system. So what I'm suggesting is to go to a, utilizing the same dollar amounts, or here's a budget amount, is to go to a flat-rate system that is just X amount of dollars per night for being available. We're not gonna pay if you get one call or two calls or three calls like we did in the old days or in the past. And just have a weekend rate and a weekday rate, nighttime, I should say.
For B and P.
For B and P. And this will allow us to, it'll just be a lot easier to transition once we are the P and we're getting into the nighttime. It'll save on the administrative side of it tremendously.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And then the lieutenant?
Right. I'd like to get permission to post for call force lieutenant's positions. We're down to three lieutenants, two captains. We used to run a staff of five or six and, you know, as deputies and all this other stuff. So we implemented the on-call. So every night, there's a officer and two firefighters available.
That's new, right?
Yes, it just happened September. And so far, so good, but the officers are, there's five of them. Myself, I'll take one, but having those other two officers in the week would help with the rotation.
They have to have them in place.
So move.
Well, what is this? So you're looking to say it again?
So it'd be call force lieutenants.
And how many are there right now?
Three.
And how many more do you need? One more, two more?
I would propose two. Paul Johnson, Brandon Johnson, Mike Fratium. And then we have Dave Gay and Mike Kennedy for captain. So it'd be adding two lieutenants. And there would be a posting, a process, assessment.
So they would come from within your reserve?
Within the ranks, yeah.
Where are they called? Not called reserves, you're calling them?
Just the call force.
They're officers.
Yeah, you're...
They'd be privates right now.
You already put the call force paces. This is the...
No, I understand. I understand. It's just trying to break it down.
Is additional pay associated with being a lieutenant?
Your rate is higher versus, you know, based on education, a couple bucks an hour.
And supervision.
And you have that funds, or you're gonna need those?
No, that should be...
So you're just shorthanded on the lieutenant side? In the past, we've had more through whatever read or not lieutenant.
Attrition, he's lost them.
Right, exactly.
And I've changed some of who does what. And my day staff takes care of... My beliefs is day staff is there to keep us mission-ready. Call force is there to extend that and work at night and evenings and responses and the responsibilities of that, so...
So you'll interview for those positions?
Oh, yeah, yeah. They'll have to post, interview. There'll be assessments or scenarios they'll have to go through and things like that.
Then you'll bring us forward two or three, or just the ones you need?
I don't know how many will apply, because they typically should have at least five years' experience, which limits the... And I would, I would hope that one of you or all of you could be part of the process, so...
Only one.
I think he raised his hand.
I think he was chanting number one. What did he say? I'm sorry. My hearing isn't what it used to be.
All right, so move.
I will second that.
All in favor? Aye. Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
On the captain thing? How does that work with the captain, this new captain's position in relation to the existing two captains?
So the...
Is the day captain more powerful than the evening captain?
Yes.
Yeah, but that's what you're asking.
Yeah, part of the...
You gotta dumb it down for me, kid, you know?
Part of the day captain's position will be, the night captains will answer to him. So he'll be part of the, you know, that whole scenario, which will be a little adjusting, but we'll be okay.
You did that in Granby, though, right?
I had lieutenants that were daytime staff.
You've worked through that scenario.
Well, there's gotta be a process. You're not around. There's gotta be people to answer to, absolutely.
Exactly.
And it hasn't been for a long time, so...
Well, I like the, I heard a couple people, and I was at the firehouse a couple weeks ago, and they were talking about the, the guy was in charge. Officer, was it officer in charge or something they called him?
Yeah, right, oh, I see.
Right, yeah, it was awesome. So they all, you know, they know who to talk to.
They all rotate and they take the lead.
No, that was great.
And what the captain's gonna do is when the captain's on duty, there's no officer in charge. It's the same thing when there's a sergeant on and the police.
Right, right, right.
There's no shift commander.
Understood, understood. But even, but in the evenings that there's an officer in charge? Now, that's very good. It's great. But I was curious how that captain thing will work out. I mean, it was, I think it'll be great.
Yeah, it'll, it's new territory, but it'll take time, and I think it'll work out great.
I think so, too. And I think everybody seems to be, from everyone I spoke to, is just on board. Testament to what you're doing over there. Thank you.
I'm just skipping ahead. I don't know if you want it, why you got me. Reserve fund transfer, last item?
Yeah. Shit, there, we're just here.
Yeah, she's in the mist.
Yeah, but I think it takes your vote to...
Yeah.
That's the blue sheet.
That's, that's the SCBA. It's the SCBA local share.
Which we already got the money for, but we have to put the local share.
Right.
And we're...
And the Fincom and the board had jointly agreed that they would do that, and the federal funding has been approved.
Right, and requested. And Laura's looking for that, I think, to set up the account or something.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the amount is?
Ninety-six million dollars.
No, four thousand.
Four thousand. Four thousand five hundred seventy-one dollars, five percent of the ninety-six thousand dollar grant delivered by your friend, Ritchie Neil Direct.
Oh, he was in town?
Yeah?
Oh, I missed that. I was busy.
Can we get him an ice cream?
That was two months ago.
He doesn't stop. He just tries by.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
I think that's it. Back to drill.
Way ahead. We're doing good here, aren't we?
Yeah, right. Cleared a room. See y'all.
Yeah. Police chief.
Come on down.
Come on down. Sure. All these chairs are apparently safe tonight. I don't know, he's just said come down.
Crossing guard, you got donations. You got two items still.
Crossing guard and donations. All right, spin right.
And those are already in there, you're assigned. If the chief needs a second crossing guard, just supplement what he has now.
We always had two crossing guards. We were finding it very difficult to fill it. I was finally able to fill it due to our primary crossing guard taking ill. And in the interim of putting him on board, I told him, "You'll probably be the primary for a while, because she's gonna be out for a while," and it didn't last that long. So I'm leaving him as the primary. She is gonna move into the secondary backfill person. And I think we'll work out better, because I spent a lot of time with her, having to backfill her with officers, which is very costly, so...
The key here is to have two people assigned to that role so that you're not gonna use officers to backfill someone's office.
Gotcha.
Motion to appoint Sean En...
Angel.
Angel?
He works for us now as a part-time animal shelter cleaner, maintenance person on weekends. Was in ten...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Coming down. And donation made to Southwood Police Department. This morning, I received a one hundred and twenty dollar cash donation from Tyler Valenport. From, I won't say his address. Tyler made a donation to show his appreciation for Sergeant Brett Banish installing three child seats in three of his vehicles. I am requesting that donation be deposited in the police department gift account.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye. Chief, one other thing we had on here is we had had a request in the parking wreck for Town Beach defibrillator. Any, I know you were gonna look into that.
I did. I spoke with our medical officer, Mike Westcott. And I think we can do it. We have one that we use at the school when our resource officer's up there.
During the, during the regular year.
During the regular, so now in the summer, that's what you...
It's not needed.
Right. I may be able to move that over. But I hope they know they gotta have training and updates and all this other stuff. You just can't take it and put it on the wall and say, "Okay, use it."
Right, no, my, my, when they first asked for, because they have a press pending before the board was, "Hey, let me check with the public safety chiefs and see what they think about how this should be administered."
Just a little background, Karen Schut came to me, because she's the manager down there. And Karen had worked at the rec center where we train our people on that and have them for coaches in childcare facilities. So she is fully trained and is aware of the training that would be required, so... I think it'd be something that could be worked out.
It's very possible that we'd be able to do it. I mean, that's the way...
When will, when will you know?
Within the next week or two. I'm coordinating with him, because he's doing his dog training.
Yeah, no.
But the last conversation I had last week with him, it's looking good. I mean, they don't open the beach, so that's July.
Yeah, thank you for that. We'll tell them.
Some things are not inexpensive, but they're, I mean, they're hugely important, especially with younger people, because that's when they work the most.
Right.
Well, the school just had two of them donated the other day for use on their playing field.
But wasn't that, I think the reason why this came about is didn't we have someone having a heart attack and they beached them at the Town Beach? And if they had had the defibrillator there, they could have possibly started the process rather than wait for the emergency personnel to show up. But that's where the people came with the individual.
The lifeguards may already get that training?
No, the boat came.
No, that was a question whether they got the training or not.
They had an emergency.
Because we weren't sure.
Yeah.
So that's why I said we, they've gotta be trained. And they have boxes you can buy, post, put it right on the wall, key and...
Yeah.
So it's not just like thrown in a drawer somewhere.
And it's like a five-hour training class or so.
We have one downstairs. I'll show you on the way out.
We have one, we're on, yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
That's it.
Cool.
And I'll get back to you another week or so, and I would, it's not an official vote, but, you know...
On the other issue that we talked about earlier with Fincom? Yeah. So what do you, what do you wanna do as far as the reserve is going? What are your thoughts?
Oh, yeah, I'll take a look at both of them and make a decision from there. And get that paperwork rolling, like, right behind this one that I'm working on right now. Like, he's going for his physical tomorrow. He's going to Smith. He passes PAT. I've got that in today. And so it's just a matter of... Put it right out there. And any finances don't have to be there till the first day, so that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, we're not meeting on the ninth. How about we just...
We could, on our consent agenda on the tenth?
I think we should have these two people with.
Or, or, what time do we meet with Russ?
What time we meet with Russ?
Seven?
Seven.
What time's the work session, sir?
For which one?
I know.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Well, there's only one work session.
Real tight next Tuesday.
Oh, okay.
I believe it's seven.
We could do it. I mean afterwards?
I could do it after.
Let's do it afterwards, I mean, I think, you know, like you said, this thing could fill up and we, we could, we could lose it, so if we, what the apparatus would take, what, an hour?
Oh, it's a little more than that, yeah.
We might wanna do it ahead of that.
But, you said he-
I know, I can't, I can't, I'm gonna be, I think I'm gonna be tight to the schedule on Tuesday.
That's fine, but last time the board just designated one of its members with the, the chief and myself to pick one of them, that's what we did last time.
What do you wanna do, Tom?
We, we can do that, or, um, we could do something on the twelfth. I already have another meeting at six thirty, could follow that up at seven, if we wanted to have a meeting, or if you want.
Bring in the KNA to interview him and-
What's the difference between the twelfth and the sixteenth by the time you're done?
Good point, or we just do it on the sixteenth, or if we wanna just have-
I des- I think we should just designate a member, because I think time is of the essence of this.
I can do it if we need to.
Make a motion to designate Mr. Mulga, because it's the town of Mr. Steinhardt, the chief.
Do you got time?
Yeah, for that, yes.
Isn't, you can do it anytime.
Yeah, that I can do it.
Tell me how you can set up a date and times and let me know.
Yeah, okay. Since you guys took those other things, I'm in great shape now.
Well, we just-
We haven't, we haven't gone that far yet in a meeting, but thanks for the, uh-
That's gonna be by P.
Alright, so do you need to make a motion for you guys to do that, or no?
No. Do we?
I would.
Why not?
Okay, a motion to designate the chairman to, uh, meet with the CAO and Chief of Police to determine, uh, uh, offer employment to, uh, patrolmen to the town of Southwood.
Second that.
From one of the two existing-
Reserves.
Reserves.
Yes, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
You'll do that before the ninth, you thinking? Or you're just, yeah, you'll just let us know when you do it.
I'll get together with the chief and we'll get it done, right?
Yeah.
Alright, fantastic. Thanks, you, you know how to find them.
Thanks, chief. Get out early.
Um, is there a new grill you gotta set up, or is there any patio?
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks.
It was all torn apart today, I was gonna, I was gonna call you and say, hey, Tony, ready for pickup?
I told you what the guy said, he says, so we're gonna, I have to do some prep to put this grill and stuff, this whole kitchen in there, he says, oh, no, no, just put it on the grass.
Oh, geez.
He says, obviously you're from Florida maybe, because in New England that's never gonna last, you know? So that guy tried to sell me an outdoor kitchen, and my wife is like, yeah, yeah, it's not a bad deal, and I said, you know, just throw it on your grass, you know?
Yeah, I got some stuff up at the farm you could throw right on the grass.
Yeah, I do, yeah, yeah.
Old barrels that we converted.
I was gonna say, is that manure, doesn't it smell when you burn it?
Okay. Back on to sort of the agenda, appoint foreman to the solid waste division from Mr. Brown.
Right, as you know, uh, Mike Beatrice had, uh, left.
Yeah.
So this is to backfill the position that he had actually, um, was technically the foreman, and he was on loan to the highway division when he left.
Yep.
So we, we do need to, uh, backfill this, and as you can see, there's, uh, a recommendation there from the director.
Yep, he recommends promoting Zachary Gerard for this position. We get to make the other one official tonight too, right?
Yep.
Somehow I missed it, but, okay, it's in here somewhere.
And that's all under the union contract.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of what I can say, but I guess I'll leave that for another day. I thought maybe Russ would work one for a week to get it to less respects and then we would do it, but I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and that's a lot of responsibility right there, so while we're here-
You got three things to do.
Yeah, I know, I, I wanna, I think we should do it in the right order unless I-
Well, that's the first one.
Seven and eight, ten, eighteen, fifteen.
Fifteen, that's what I wanted, I think I wanted fifteen.
Yeah, you did.
That's, so, this is, actual item fifteen is, dear Sol, his words, not mine, this letter is to inform you that my last day of employment with the Southwood DPW is September twenty-ninth, and I will be retiring after thirty-four years of service to the town, from Douglas, what a great name, H. Seber. So-
Met with him today?
You did?
Yep.
Fantastic. So, we have a certificate for Dougie, and, we need to, we don't accept his retirement, right, at the time?
Yeah, he, he retires to the county, he does technically not retire.
Okay, so we have a certificate to sign before we leave tonight.
He's already been approved by the county.
Who's the black one?
Right.
By Henry County and the Commonwealth of America.
So, so the second half of the other letter, we jump back to seven, eight, is now that Mr. Seber's retired, uh, says Calvin Arnold has a temp, been a temporary employee of DPW the last two years, filling one of these positions, Arnold has the license required of the heavy equipment operator and has made progress in his work. As such, if possible, DPW recommends hiring Mr. Arnold as heavy equipment operator in the solid waste division, and-
Right, because he's been a temp for the last two years.
And now there is a vacancy of a heavy equipment operator in the highway division, and they request to post this position internally in accordance with the union contract.
Well, what has to happen is now that Doug is leaving, the foreman position for the highway division has to be, uh, also advertised, so that's, you need to authorize me to do that.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then are we going to make a motion for Calvin Arnold?
So moved.
You would be converting him because he's-
All in favor? Aye. Let's all pass the close, and then we, I mean, and we have to, we did the posting, we all caught up here?
Yep.
We need to sign anything here, Cindy, or is this all?
You're, you're good.
Okay, look at that, they even have an org chart, how awesome is that?
Yep, you're gonna have to add to that.
Can I have those papers, please? Because otherwise they get all out of-
In my car is where they end up, I understand. Item, alright, wait a minute. Okay, so now we have an award, Veteran Street Infrastructure Improvement Project, uh, this is a bid award to whom?
Goncalves.
Correct, thank you, I couldn't say it.
And the, uh, everything is attached.
Yep.
And it's a notice of award letter prepared by Erica Johnson from the PVPC, who's acting as the project manager on behalf of the town, and it's, uh, ready for the chairperson of the board to sign off, and it's got the, uh, the parent low bidder. Again, this is for all that CDVG work.
Okay, explain to me who the low bidder is.
Page two says it's, uh-
When they went through the process with, when, when they went through the process with, um, Tyne Bond, in terms of the eligible people and what they submitted. Goncalves.
It's correct.
But how come on here it says?
Oh, no, yeah, it kind of counts.
It says Caracas Construction Corporation.
They're not in order.
You know what I'm saying?
I saw this last night, it was-
Notice of award in to, who it's to, and then you go over here to the low bidder, but-
Oh, wait a minute.
You got Jack down here at three hundred and eleven thousand, and you got Caracas up here at three hundred and twenty-seven thousand. So who, who's getting the contract?
Caracas Construction met, is in conference with the requirements, the bidding documents are filed, it's, you know.
It just is, happens to be-
Maybe Jack didn't have the right paperwork.
No, it says here, it says, this, this, this actually is a typographical mistake, you know, I saw this last night and it gave me a headache and I put it out of my mind, you're right. It, it says Matthias Goncalves, which is the low bidder, at Caracas Construction Corporation, so-
You're right.
I guess I would-
Oh, no, you're right, it is, it is-
This is a typographical error, so why don't we entertain a motion to have the chair sign a corrected one of these when it's prepared?
And, and, I'll, I'll, I'll second him, but I just wanted to, who, Tyne Bond reviewed this?
Yeah.
Okay.
But why, because of the typo, or because just the number?
I, I'm just saying, who, well, who, somebody-
The bid submitted by the parent low bidder corrects.
Alright, I'll-
And it's interesting that it's out of, unless this is a typographical error, that they're swapped.
Right, I mean, I mean, but the document is bad, it's a public document, and somebody, either Pioneer Valley should have caught it, or Tyne Bond should have caught it, that's, that's all I'm saying.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, I, I got you.
You know, but I, I'll second the motion, you know.
I know what you're saying. Yeah, not only the first page, but the second page.
Right.
And so this stuff's way too small for me to look at. We gotta call Daniel Holmes, Danny, what's up?
Sum the totals correctly, which resulted in an increase of three thousand dollars.
I don't know, I, I, I just think it needs to be redone.
But it's got Caracas again.
Yeah, it does say-
Tyne Bond reviewed the project references, which provided by Caracas, which probably shouldn't have been in contract, except that it was something.
That's fine, what we'll do is we'll authorize Doug to, uh, sign off by-
This has to be cleared up, because it says here-
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see who it is again.
Yeah, because it, Goncalves, however you say that, I apologize.
Or was responsible bidder.
Right.
Unless it's a brother, you know, of Jack.
I mean, it could happen.
That owns Caracas Construction, and Jack is a brother or cousin or uncle or aunt or whatever, and, and that's a typo down there. Anyways, I, I, I second that motion, I think we should vote on it, let Doug figure it out, but somebody needs to clarify that, because that's a terrible public document that people are gonna laugh at us.
There's actually a notice, it says, for comparison, Tyne Bond had four hundred and one thousand dollars as the probable construction cost. The contractor did not sum the totals correctly, which resulted in an increase of three thousand dollars. This discrepancy in the total price was a result of an error in summing each unit price, the corrected sum is noted above, and Caracas Construction remains the lowest bidder.
So that's how you get from the three twenty-four up to three twenty-seven because of the three thousand dollar error.
Right, but you're still right back to one name on top.
Right.
Yeah, alright, so we'll-
No, if it's Caracas up top, it still comes out, right?
Yeah, but it's from-
Mr. Goncalves at Caracas Construction?
Right.
Good catch.
I, I, I just, it needs to be corrected.
I, I thought it improbable last night when I was reading this going-
It's only got Morgan's science, so if Morgan's gonna blow it, that's the good news.
That's right.
I can see this, somebody reading this on Letterman some night, you know, it doesn't exist anymore.
Send me a cake with a file in it.
Yeah.
Congratulations, here's a million dollars.
In Southwood. In Southwood, they award bid the lowest bid, nobody knows math.
Exactly.
Okay.
Some guy named Mugsy signed it.
Alright, I'll have Erica double check that, because I'm looking at-
Give us our history, listen.
I'm looking at the, yeah.
We like the family tree, we just wanna see how it all worked down the end.
So we-
Well, it is not uncommon for one member of the family to go down the street in that town and work for another company.
Oh, absolutely.
And they all got bids, and they all understand the bid process.
I think we all found that out with, um, Bruschi.
Yeah.
We, Bruschi wasn't working for Bruschi.
Right.
So I'll have Erica review it.
Okay, so now we have a invoice number eleven from the always accurate Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for-
Ten A you're talking about?
I'm on ten A.
Okay.
Invoice, invoice eleven, item ten A.
Oh, invoice number eleven, okay. Okay.
Yeah, try to work that out, when they get us invoice twelve, that'll be action item twelve, get it, okay.
Okay.
There's another day I gotta spend on that.
This is ten dollars in phone calls for a total of twelve thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty cents.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
This one, everybody gets a sign. There you go, doctor. Took care of eleven, huh? Sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so item fourteen A is to the select board, please accept my resignation from the Agricultural Commission at my encouragement. Brett Mitchell, the proprietor of Norristor Organics, sent a letter of interest which you should have, um, this is from Jocelyn Lineken in the Ag Commission.
So moved.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And do we have?
A marker?
Yes, we have one, yes, pre-inked, and do we have, did we, Mr. Mitchell?
He was the one who did not appoint last, you had two people in one slot.
Correct, we had two, and we, so, would anyone like to make a-
So moved.
There you go. All in favor?
Aye.
Brett Mitchell, right?
Brett Mitchell.
Yes.
Brett Mitchell.
Well, I thought it said Brett Caracas, oh, I'm under the wrong.
Jack's, Jack or Jack for other. They're not making this easy on me for that.
That's why he gets paid the big money.
Twenty-two Castle we did, right?
Yeah.
On some of these.
That was the first thing.
Yeah, okay, so the next one is approval of a one-day liquor license from the WIC, Three Three Eight Promotions LLC.
If you could possibly have a contingent vote.
Yeah.
You haven't heard from the detective sergeant?
And I sent a email, and I still haven't got a response yet, I mean, this, they're asking for this event on Veterans Day at eleven AM, five PM, and I've wondered when the parade was, and when the-
Um, the Veterans Day party?
Veterans Day.
So that'll be the-
They're requesting?
VFW.
Can you go get it?
VFW.
No, he's bringing it up, bringing it back. Did he say when he's gonna hold the event?
So it's-
No, but he said the invitations are going out on the mail this week.
The parade's usually at ten.
Russ, they just came in to pull the application for the parade.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, it's Veterans Day, and we're, we're being asked to approve an event on Veterans Day morning, you know?
No, no, but you're talking about traffic.
Right.
No.
And I just wanna make sure that we're not going to disturb the-
Parade or anything.
Parade and the ceremony honoring veterans, that's all I, I'm concerned.
Those mud blocks don't do that from over there, they don't have anywhere near the traffic as regulated.
No, not-
Well, if it's anything like the first one, it's a non-issue.
It's a non-issue.
That's what I mean.
Right.
They don't really-
I know that.
You gotta go, eleven to five.
I mean, they gone to them, so.
And what time is the, the parade, usually it's ten.
He just came to get the application today.
Well, the parades are usually always at nine forty-five.
Quite frankly, personally, I think it shouldn't start before noon, but that's just me speaking. I think it's really a, a disservice to the veterans, but that's my opinion.
What day is that on?
Saturday.
Okay, I got you.
The eleventh.
Yeah. The drinking, the drinking until noon, start at noon, I agree, yeah, that's, that's, that's a no-brainer.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's the eleventh day, at the eleventh hour, the eleventh month.
Yeah.
You know, and it's a veterans organization, but it's a veterans organization doing it, you know, so, you know, but, but the VFW is in charge of Veterans Day.
So how do you get a staff both events?
I don't know, I, I-
Well, they're not, because, because that's at the American Legion, and this is the VFW.
So, do we wanna, would we entertain a con, motion conditioned on Detective Sergeant Landis's-
Recommendation.
Recommendation, and an amended start time of noon?
Yep. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, I'll abstain from voting.
Got it. Old business. Captain Carl and I met and resolved the police job description interview for the chief and lieutenant.
Are both there?
Oh, they're in there.
Yeah, I saw one.
They're right next to you.
Oh, there, I found a, a word in there, by the way, Captain.
A word, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, I gotta send it to you. It had nothing to do with what we discussed. I was just reading it again and there's a.
Oh, you mean another word in tax stuff on the job description?
Yeah. Yeah.
That's fine. We can, we can make that change, Bill.
There's a missing plurality that should be there.
It's under your thing right here.
Probably under.
Now, the last time I gave you one of these, you left the room and, and Duck and I had to go do it again, cuz you left with it. It's in your meeting packet. Alright, so you'll let me know what that word was, Doug?
Yeah, it's one word.
Well, after you guys vote to make whatever changes you wanna make tonight, then we can have that other word changed, Bill.
It's actually in your meeting minutes clipper.
Yeah, he's got it.
Right, now you can.
He's got it.
Full slow.
So under the chief, Carl?
Yeah.
Uh, D.
D, yep.
Two. First sentence, arrest dead. It should be arrest dead.
Number two, signature for indicating the number of persons of each sex arrest, uh.
Dead.
Yeah. D two.
Yeah, right, yes, okay.
That's, that's straightforward.
That was it.
Okay, page three. Any questions on page three under the required work experience?
So we took out Bachelors Department of Criminal Justice, at least twelve years' experience, and unfortunately, they feel, oh yeah, okay, five years of supervision.
So is that one, if, if the board's okay with that one, they should make a motion to, uh, to adopt the amendments?
Make a motion to adopt the amendment on page three, under education.
So we're just crossing out that?
Yeah, and adding the five years of advisory.
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next job description. Does that have that other same typo?
I don't know. I didn't, I just saw it tonight when I was reading before the meeting, so more than likely.
Aye.
No, it's totally different, so.
Yeah, no, it doesn't have it.
Okay. Which would make sense, cuz that would be a duplicity of the same report.
Well, sometimes when someone's a true assistant, it's assist, if they write the word assist and everything else is the same. Assist which? Okay, this one had, uh, instead of twelve years, this one has eight years. And the other one had twelve and five, this has got eight and three.
So move.
Any questions on this?
I do. One quick question, Carl. I forgot to mention it.
Yeah.
In, in the job description here, it's number thirty-four right above C. It says acts as safety officer.
Yeah.
Our safety officer is not the lieutenant today.
You know, you're right, because that's Loflin used to, what it was originally do it, so we can strike that, cuz that's really under the chief's right of assignment anyway.
Right. And same thing for thirty-five then, right? So would the chief appoint a P R O? Under incident command or whatever thing?
Well, that's only.
Well, yeah, but I mean.
Incident command.
But under his right of assignment, he can have a public information officer.
Yeah, P I O.
So get rid of that?
Thirty-four and thirty-five.
Okay. Good idea. So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we'll, we'll make these edits through Labor Council.
And then at our next meeting, or, do we need further direction to post from here? Or once you have these edits, we don't, or if we, we have to wait to accept them from Labor Council again?
Yeah, I, I would like.
You would like to do that.
Have Labor Council weigh in on that first, and then you can take that up on another ration, and then you'll, you'll do the posting.
Okay.
Cuz really, it's, you know, it's based upon tonight's meeting and all the other stuff you're gonna do. It's more of an internal posting.
Yes.
Right, so.
Still wanna keep plugging away.
So you're, you're making good progress.
Correct. Under the North Pond bylaw, we've heard nothing from the state.
No, the chief heads, the chief has, um, been submitting information to the state and giving stuff to the Colonel and making sure that the Colonel's received it. And he's just waiting to get back from the.
And the information that we received as chairman on last meeting was not new information to the chief, nor I, as far as what we'd seen before, so.
Well, that's all been given to the Colonel.
Correct.
Everything that everybody had brought forward to you at the table.
Correct.
Was packaged by the chief and submitted and.
Right, but the information that was presented at our last meeting.
Right.
Wasn't a shocking, was not a shocking revelation.
Right, wasn't, right, the chief having been to the meeting, you having been to that meeting.
Correct, and the chief has much more depth of experience with this than I, and he had, he had already had that information.
He's given me the understanding. He has free ring binders with everything laid out, almost like it's a court case.
I've seen it. I've seen this binder, it exists.
Right, so he has quite a body of evidence.
Okay. Uh, we, we need to go further on this update of underground stank removal we just went through.
I, no, that's what we just took here tonight.
Okay.
I wanted to make sure we did that.
Old business.
Towing.
Towing. Excellent point. Thank you, Mister Vice Chairman. So we have, from the chief left.
He's the secretary.
Aye.
He's always the chairman of the meeting.
Absolutely.
I'll take that action for a bit, sir.
That's clerk.
Oh, I'm the secretary.
It is, it is clerk. Isn't that what you called yourself one time? You're kind of just a something clerk?
Yeah, that's it. Okay, so we had, we have two applicants, right?
At, at least, right, there's, I know there's two, and I heard rumors of a, an email that the chief had gotten today and he didn't, uh.
So we have two applicants in front. I know one of them was right here, but I don't know why I knew it. Ah, well, that's a different one.
Right.
Anyhow, yeah, they were in this mess. Fairwood. Oh, look, you might wanna keep this one. This one's special. Okay. So. I think it's sink. Okay, so we, um. How does this work, Mister Carl?
Well, Cindy, I, I think.
Is this administered by the chief, or is this administered by this board?
Cindy has the tow regulations. Do you have them on you, Cindy?
Do.
Could you go get them?
Actually, an application that has to be filled.
There is a, you, the board has adopted a tow regulation process, and it's got policy, I think, so you should review anything that's coming into you against your current approach. It, it does allow you to have two, I think, three.
Three up to three operators.
Three operators.
Mister Chairman.
Sir.
I think this would be great that we give the regulations and the applications to the C A O and the Chief of Police and have them make a recommendation, hopefully by our consent agenda next Tuesday.
It's an excellent idea.
And that would be my suggestion, Mister Chairman.
Mister Clerk.
Thank you.
That would be excellent idea. Would you like to second his now, his motion?
Second his motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, that one, Carl, I need that packet back to give to Carl.
You need the whole packet?
Well, it's Carl's packet.
Oh, I stole it from him. But you might wanna click that.
Well, that's, I think, he did that on purpose, but he's always.
Cuz you knew he'd get it back, right? It's a special one.
Yeah.
You know what to do?
Do you mind if I give you? One with a name on it?
Just give it right to Carl.
Give it right to Carl.
Give it right to Carl.
We took care of it while you were gone.
We took care of it while you were gone.
Yeah.
What'd you decide?
Give it to Carl.
We made it Carl in charge of it.
Oh, okay. And the chief, the chief and I.
Chief, Chief and Carl.
Okay.
And that makes.
And I, I'm sure judging by the phone calls I got, the applicants will fill out any application we want by next Tuesday.
Yeah, cuz I'd rather give you a blank when I was.
Or no demand.
I just need a regular. One filled out.
Fantastic. That's great.
Cuz they are chafing at the bill, so.
And it's good, because I know they got.
And anybody that called me, I said, "Call him and find the application, or he'll give you the information."
Then no one ever called me.
And nobody called you?
And I think someone came to see Cindy about a zoning issue related to it, but nothing to do with actually getting an application.
See, I told him to.
I don't know why.
Go to him.
He, he wanted to.
Oh, okay.
But I gave, no, the gentleman that he's thinking of, cuz he went upstairs, he went all over the place. And he finally came down here and he, he was asking about a class two. But he wanted, because he wanted to put it on a class two property.
Ah.
That, is that who you're talking, what you're talking about?
I, no, I, I had people from Michael's Towing, and then we had that, uh, email from USA.
Yeah.
And then.
Oh, those have been going.
Another one.
Then our current.
Yeah, those have been going on for a while.
Vendor had said, you know, was cont- contacting USA to get them to get going.
Well, I know the chiefs had people make inquiries, but it, it may, don't be alarmed if you don't have a recommendation that you're next to.
I, I know that. I know that.
Because we're gonna be a little bit methodic with this in terms of people having to go through your regulations that you've adopted. They wanted to use two three road.
Yeah.
As a place to put it, so.
But in the same route, you have to be careful, because if you squeeze them too tight, they ain't coming.
Okay, well, they're common sense, yeah.
No, yeah.
Well, that's why, you know, don't forget, if your regs allow you to have three, and you already have one, one right now, and you're gonna just replace one, or you're gonna end up, you know, do you wanna have two net new ones? Because your current one's going away. You really need two.
Yeah, I think, I think you really do need two.
No, we need two.
So then it's just a matter of, you know, if there's three people looking for it.
Cuz I think in both of the next cases, they're really not based in Southwick. They can make themselves available in Southwick, and do what they need to do to make it work through our regulations.
Right.
But they're not sitting at a body shop in town.
Right.
Already running another business.
Yeah, or in the center, right.
When you supplement or complement another business, then you're already there.
Yeah, absolutely.
And the other thing is these places that, they're already getting, they're getting a cut, and they're giving a cut to the municipal police departments in the other towns. We don't add anything else to this town. This town does not do that to it, too.
Correct.
Anyways, you and the chief, I'm sure are gonna come up with a, a great plan.
Yeah, I just need to have all of the names of the different companies. This is, this is the one that came in today.
Okay, so just send that right down the other end there.
They can't do it. The second one is, who came in today? Look at the location. Just save them all. I don't know which ones you have.
We'll work it out.
We'll work it out.
I only have one company in front of me. I only have one in front of me, too, and that's why I was looking at this.
Okay.
Alright.
Carrying on. Other old business, sir?
Uh, that was the top thing I wanted to work on tonight, Mister Chairman.
Mister Vice Chairman?
The phone calls we got during the week, would that be new business or old business?
It depends. Was it something we previously discussed?
No, not recently.
Then it would be new business.
Alright, yeah, I have nothing.
Okay, then. New business, Mister Vice Chairman. You may have got a phone call this week.
We did.
Well, what would that have been about?
I didn't do it.
Well, the shadow doesn't look that, yeah.
Well, even Mike got the same phone call.
Yeah, Mike had a phone call, too.
Right. He was there.
What board is that?
Oh, that issue. That issue.
Yes.
Right. So, how do we, how do we do that procedurally?
I think the board should designate one of its members to go and follow up on the concerns that all the board members received relating to, uh, uh, concerns about the, uh, vote of appeals.
It's a rock, paper, scissors, or?
Mister Fox, would you care to take care of?
Certainly.
Furdog that issue.
It's working out pretty good. I thought for sure I was leaving with something, but that's it.
We're not done yet. Any other new business? Cuz there was more phone calls.
Oh, I didn't get those.
I.
The other one. The VFW one.
Oh, well, we.
Oh, the cemetery.
The Chairman of the Cemetery Commission dropped off emails concerning an issue, and she dropped it off because she had called me, I think, at least a month ago, maybe even longer than that, um, asking what I thought she should do about a, uh, possible liability issue at the cemetery involving a roadway. And I told her to contact the D P W to see if they couldn't assist and do some temporary things to make sure that, uh, no one had any, uh, accidents down there or nobody got hurt. And, uh, it, it seemed to have went back and forth, and like, there's always two sides to every story. But, uh, I was a little, uh, surprised when I, when she dropped off this email. I, I felt that the tone of the email probably wasn't, uh, the kind of email I would expect from a team that's working for the betterment of the town of Southwick.
Would you care to follow up on that issue, or would you?
Oh, I, I think that, uh, I, I would like to have a, a little conversation, and, and maybe the C A O can assist me. You know, that, uh, I, I know that we requested certain things in the past, uh, from this department, related to management training and things of that nature, and, and, uh, and I thought we had some pretty frank discussions in the past about team effort in working with other parts of town government. You know, this, this doesn't look like the message got through.
Sir?
That's a disappointing email to read. What's in it, we talking about government?
And I know the Vice Chairman has been down there.
Yeah, I bet he has.
Having discussions before, and so I, I don't know, I, 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 I don't have any problems if the board wants me to go down there and, and to, uh, express our concerns.
I think you gotta be a little tougher than that. This is not expressive concern. This email shouldn't even have been written. You, you, why, why do you, has anyone learned in life, you don't types crap that you, you don't wanna, in a minute? I know it's his honest opinion. Yeah, sure, fill it down.
Okay.
Yeah. Right, I mean, you read this. This isn't how you talk to another department. I, I don't think I'd get too far if I wrote like this. No, this, that's embarrassing for the individual especially. What time of day was it? It's quarter of eight in the morning. I'll back to your day B.
Just, okay. Any other new business, sir?
I, I have, I'm gonna bring it up under new business, and I, I don't wanna make a, a, a big issue out of this. But when I was reading one of the local papers this weekend, I, I noticed that the, uh, our sister town of Granville, uh, is having their, um, annual fair.
This weekend, huh?
And this weekend. And, uh, I was a little surprised to see that they will be utilizing the school building.
Oh.
And I believe that, and I'm not an attorney, but I thought we had, the region had made a settlement, which the town of Southwick pays approximately eighty-four to eighty-six percent of, and we've had the cost of legal counsel because we've joined and that lawsuit, and, and we negotiated out a term of compensation for a building that was to be closed. And I, again, don't wanna make a big issue out of this. They're gonna have their fair. I go to the fair every year. But, but in fairness, since we're still in litigation with them, and they still have not passed the capital budget, you know, I, I, I think it's, uh, a little unfair to the town of Southwick and the town of Granville. And perhaps a town attorney can advise us if, if there isn't some sort of compensation that the town of Tallinn and the town of Southwick through the region should, uh, gain from the use of this building.
Would that be the district's council?
I, I don't know. I, again, I'm not an attorney. I don't wanna make the, a big issue out of this, but I mean, if we had a legal settlement.
Geez, where's the liability fall, where someone falls? On that property on that weekend, or, I mean, is this to us?
I don't know.
To the school district, right?
I, I, I don't know, but.
Yeah.
But I thought we signed up, the region signed up an agreement.
Right.
And we were party to that.
Yeah.
To that. You know, again, don't wanna make a big issue out of.
I understand.
Uh, they're our sister community. We, we have a, in the past, we always had a great working relationship. It's a little strained right now, but, but, uh, I, I, I would like some sort of legal interpretation of what's going on. And you bring up a good point about the liability, liability issue.
Little person has that.
I don't know about it. Maybe we should just address a letter to the superintendent of the region, uh, expressing some concern in asking for the region's, uh, attorney to advise us. With a C C to go into, uh, attorney coil. But it's up to the board.
No harm in that.[1767.11]